Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Rankin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Here.
Councilmember Woolridge?
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Councilmember Montano?
Here.
Councilmember Galen?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
This be called the public for public comment on issues within jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual councilmembers may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take any action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion in legal action. I don't have any slips about the other...
No, I haven't.
This time I'll open call to the public. Ruth?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. I'm here to bring something to your attention and perhaps to make a suggestion. The...this meeting tonight was, um, the agenda was posted on Thursday, but the meeting itself, I believe, was known to have been planned for several weeks, known by many people in town, not by others, probably, because they only found out about it if they watched the website on Thursday. But for transparency, governmental transparency, which was a theme that came up in the recent election, I might suggest that getting some information to the newspaper editor on Tuesday before a meeting, that I should say, well, yes, it would be Tuesday before the meeting, but Tuesday before the Wednesday or Thursday publication of the paper for a meeting that's going to occur either later that week or early the next week, might be a good thing to do. Even if you don't know the whole agenda, if you know something about what's going to be on the agenda, at least he would be able to publish a notification that says, "The meeting is going to take place, and this is the time," and so forth, and maybe a little bit about what is planned to be discussed. And things can be added, of course, until, what, 24 hours or so before the meeting takes place. And I think those are the rules. But in any case, at least the public would have some knowledge of what's happening, what's coming up, and you would get more people on your side, probably, now with this override issue coming up, not override, but, you know, the, um...
Home rule.
The home rule. Thank you. The home rule. You want as many people supporting that as possible. So that's my suggestion, and I hope you can do something about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other member of the public? Seeing no movement, I'll close the call to the public. Need a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second, motion and second adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussion of the public body pursuant to ARS 38431-03A1 and further ARS 3843-431.03A4. Need be read into that. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. We're adjourned to executive session.
I'll make a motion to adjourn from executive session.
Second. We have a motion and second adjourn from executive session. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Mayor, item six, new business. A. Discussion, approval, disapproval of entering into a contract for interim town prosecutor services. Mayor.
We've been in executive session on this. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Richard Husk for a contract as our interim town prosecutor.
Second. We have a motion and a second to appoint Richard Husk as the interim town prosecutor. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Six B. Discussion, approval, disapproval of entering into a contract with a law firm to provide interim legal services to the town of Florence. Mayor.
We also discuss this in the executive session. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve entering into a contract with the Dickinson Wright Law Firm to provide interim legal services to the town of Florence.
Second. We have a motion and second to approve Dickinson Wright, interim attorneys for the town of Florence, representing the town. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Item C. Resolution number 1490-14. Discussion, approval, disapproval of a resolution to the town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, affirming the town of Florence's preferences regarding the proposed ADOT North-South Freeway Corridor. Mr. Eckhoff.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. I'll make this a very brief presentation for you because I know even our new members on the council are very familiar with the North-South Corridor project. It is a planned 45-mile-long freeway corridor that will occur between Apache Junction and Eloy at some point in the future. We've been talking about the project for some time. Got really serious working with ADOT on this project in about 2009. Since then, we've been coming back to the council almost every year with updates to how, what our preferences are on the corridor through the Florence planning area. The study has evolved over time, as you can see in this chart. We are at a very critical stage now where they're about to take the alternatives that ADOT has gathered, working through this extensive process, and try to finalize one single corridor. Now, ultimately, you know, the result of that is an environmental impact statement, a design concept report, so forth. They still obviously have the issue of funding for the freeway. They're looking at tolling. They're looking at other mechanisms to fund it, maybe building an interim roadway of sorts just to get something going. But for us, and all the stakeholders, the landowners, the other communities, it's really critical to get to that point where we can identify a line on the map and work with folks to get that right-of-way preserved. So we've gone through many renditions of where the corridor will be. We've...just recently, they had these open house meetings. You can see that they had the pretty good attendance at the one in the Florence-Coolidge area. Some of the others, not as well attended as expected. They're starting to get comments in now on these corridors. Critical thing is the comments on this stage of the process are due to ADOT in writing, no later than January 9th, 2015. So if anybody went to meetings and they had verbal comments, or they discussed things with folks in the room, those comments are nice, but they're not going to count towards the process. Everything needs to be in writing, and it needs to be directed to ADOT regarding this project. Concurrently, as you all know, there is the North-South Passenger Rail Study process that's going along, and we continue to emphasize the desire to have that corridor, which is generally the orange line on this map, coincide with the North-South Freeway Corridor. So our preferences have been, as I indicated before, transcribed on our land use map. This is the most recent rendition of the North-South Corridor shown on the general plan land use map that was done earlier this year. And now what we've done is look at this corridor as opposed to the corridor options that ADOT has presented us, and we can identify the closest, if not, it's not identical, but the closest corridor to our preferences would be this route that would have the O3 option, going to the V option, to the X option, to the AO option. We have a resolution attached to this item that continues to affirm our preference to follow, to have the corridor follow what we've indicated in our general plan. We've supplemented that with, if we have to choose from the segments that are presented by ADOT, these are the segments that are critical for the town of Florence. We also have indicated a very strong interest in not going forward with the alternative options. In particular here, option Q really is absolutely the worst option for the town of Florence. It has monumental impacts on all of the areas that are developing and growing and plan to develop north of the Gila River. This is sitting right adjacent to the Anthem community. Would have impacts on Anthem, would have impacts on Merrill Ranch that have not been appropriately planned for. What's equally as bad is that this option would bring the corridor many miles west of the core of Florence, of downtown Florence. And we all know that that, what the impact that that would have on accessibility into our downtown area, the long-term sustainability of our downtown, of the ability to continue to be an employment hub for this region. So Q is absolutely one of the most horrible options that's still out there on this study, and we hope through this process we can eliminate that at the very least. And with that, those, all, everything that I've said has been expressed in the resolution, so we'll share the resolution, if it's approved here tonight, with ADOT. And folks can continue to, the general public, anybody, all of you, and anybody in the public can go online, or they can go to this email that's indicated here, and they can express, you know, the, "We support this resolution," or "We support the Florence General Plan corridor preferences." Do whatever you need to do to get the word out. This is really, really, really a super critical stage of the project. And with that, I'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
Any member of the council have any questions?
No.
No. Mark, I appreciate that, again, the public needs to have the input into it. ADOT seems to be taking a lot of...they claim they're going to be taking a lot of input off of emails and written, or send it in by writing. But, uh, so we do need to get the public behind us on this and get as many emails into them as we can.
Absolutely.
We had our, hearing no other discussion, need a motion?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution number 1490-14, affirming the town's preference on the proposed Arizona Department of Transportation North-South Freeway Corridor.
Second.
We have motion and second to adopt Resolution 1490-14. Any other discussion?
Are we going to be sure that we provide a link to this on our website and put that information in any kind of correspondence we send out to our residents?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Yes, we are working closely on addressing those items and also talking about other venues that would possibly can help the word out. And of course, our wonderful newspaper representative here will probably help us get that communication out as well.
Okay. Thank you.
I like the idea. If we're going to get it on town, information, we need to get it out as soon as possible so we can get their comments in.
Mayor, it's on the town's website as we speak, and then we'll be sending out a newsletter here to all town residents in January, and that'll be included in that as well.
You better make it right at the, you know, we don't want to get them where people forget about it.
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt Resolution 1490-14. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Okay, now we'll call the meeting back to order. You have to have the green light on in your mic if you want to talk. Uh, we're set up tonight where some of the positions will be to your back, or some of the staff members will have their backs to you, but we did this so that we could all see the same thing on the screen. And there will be plenty of opportunity as we go through here for you folks that are interested in this to talk. I'm not, you know, we're not going to shut you, or limit you to three minutes or anything, but if you start going over the same thing over and over and over, then we will. Then understood? Just want to make sure everybody understands. Okay.
Item seven. Work session with local vendors regarding the farmer's market downtown. I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Evans, who will do a brief presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Rankin and members of the council. I'd like to give you a brief overview of the history of the Florence farmer's market since its inception. It was established back in 2002, and at that time, the Chamber of Commerce took the farmer's market under its umbrella and asked, or actually approached the town council about forgiving or waiving permit fees to get the market kicked off. They approached the council again in 2003 and asked the town council to waive the permitting fees for farmer's market vendors through the end of 2004. Since that time, the Chamber of Commerce has not been involved. I don't quite know the year, but for several years, the Chamber of Commerce has not been affiliated with the farmer's market. And then in 2010, town staff approached the town council about establishing a special events regulation or policy to govern vendors at special events. And that ordinance was adopted by the town council in 2011. Since that time, all special events held in the town of Florence are regulated by this ordinance, and all vendors are expected to complete a vendor application and either pay the permit fee, or they may be eligible for an exemption. And for the most part, the system has worked well since 2010, and many of the vendors who participate in our local events do have an exemption, so there's not an undue financial burden to be a vendor for a special event here in Florence. In October of this year, town staff sent a letter to the remaining vendors of the current Florence farmer's market that has been, been meeting, I guess, or congregating there at Ariela Square since 2002. And there's no official designation that we're aware of as far as organization of that market. The town has not regulated it during all of this time, nor is there a nonprofit directly affiliated with the market. So we sent this letter this fall. Basically, the intent of the letter is to notify the vendors that, you know, we would like to bring them under the special event regulation and have them start completing applications and so forth, so they are treated the same as other vendors at special events. And that brings us up to date. Another part of that letter also included the idea that there's been a lot of discussion among town staff about maybe establishing a farmer's market on a different day of the week, and I wanted to just give a brief overview of those ideas. Currently, the farmer's market meets on Saturday morning from roughly 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And with a new market, it would have two components. An artisan market, which would address your arts and crafts vendors. And the idea is to bring in vendors who make handcrafted items, and there would be, you know, pretty stringent rules as to, you know, the, all items that are sold in this particular artisan market would have to be handmade. And then the other component of the market is the farmer's market side, which is we're trying to recruit produce vendors and people who maybe make value-added agricultural products, such as goat's milk cheese, or lotions, or something like that. Town staff has had some discussions about locations. Currently, the farmer's market is located at Ariela Square, which is the bottom third red dot you see on that image. The middle red dot is Ariela Square, which traditionally we have had some special events there. And then the red dot up at the top of the image is Sixth Street adjacent to the Silver King Marketplace and Padilla Park. So our idea is to hold this new market on Sixth Street adjacent to Padilla Park on the first and third Thursdays of the month to coincide with already scheduled activities at that location with a concert in the park. And then the Chamber of Commerce also has their first Thursdays at that time. And then the discussion's been, well, perhaps, which is look at adjusting the time from, say, having it from 11:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. And the main reason to do that is to take advantage of our residents and visitors that come in particularly in the winter months, as well as the office workers who commute into town on a daily basis. And then, of course, the market would fall under the special event ordinance, and the vendors would have to have their business licenses and collect taxes. And then one last component would be that, you know, all vendors would have canopies or umbrellas or tables set up. There would not be any selling out of a vehicle. And that's really to preserve the high-quality image for the market and kind of delineate it, you know, the difference between a farmer's market in the traditional sense versus, say, a swap meet that you might find, you know, elsewhere with newer items, so... And in all of these discussions, there has been quite a bit of research done. And I'll just give you a brief overview of what other communities do with regards to farmer's markets. Flagstaff has a market on Sunday mornings. It's generally held in the summer months, and they do have food and artistic vendors. Cottonwood, they have their markets starting the 1st of July and running through the beginning of October. And theirs are held Thursday evenings from 5:00 p.m. until dusk. And they do have live music there. They have a broad range of vendors, so that includes produce vendors as well as arts and crafts. This is a list of the vendors that are, or, I'm sorry, the markets that are held in our region, and they range from the two in Casa Grande. One's the winter market. One's the summer market that's indoors, up to Chandler, and Over to Globe, and Oracle. And you can see the days of the week that these markets are held and the times and schedule. You know, the majority of these are held on Saturdays, and there have been discussions about that. You know, what's the best day of the week to hold a market? I think there are a couple of arguments can be made for and against that, holding a Saturday market, is that there are quite, there's quite a lot of competition in the area on that day, and so that's why we were kind of looking at a weekday market. And then these are some of the considerations that we've had as far as, you know, the specific details that need to be addressed when you hold a farmer's market, you know, who coordinates it, who should be coordinating it. Now, we'll tell you, on that list of farmer's markets I just showed you, virtually all of them, with the exception of one, are managed by an LLC, a limited liability corporation. So some of those markets were initially established by a municipality, but as soon as they became, you know, more successful, they were spun out of the government, out of the public sector and into the private sector. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Any member of the staff, any, or the council, have any questions at this time? Any suggestions or...
Yes, I've got a question about the, one of the first slides. You said the crafts had to be handmade?
Yes, sir.
Handmade where, by who?
By the vendor. Sorry. Pretty much by the vendor. We're really talking, in these types of markets, we're talking about hobbyists who need an outlet for their crafts and their arts. And so the expectation, and what we're looking at is, I pulled the rules and regulations from virtually all of the markets I just showed you on that list, and they're all pretty compatible and using the same types of rules. But, you know, the most significant thing as far as the handmade items is that you don't want things that were, that might have a "Made in China" label on them. You know, they need to be significantly altered.
Yes, that was my point.
Yes. They should be significantly altered in some way.
Not handmade in China.
No, sir.
Your presentation's not in our book.
Oh.
I didn't realize it wasn't in here.
I just finished it today. Mayor Rankin, I can provide a copy to you and all council members?
I'd like to go back here while we're, while we're sitting here talking about this. Go back. I can't remember what page it was. Let's just go back to the...okay, there, I think that we need to go to, right that page here. I think that's one of the first things we have to decide. Is it artesian market, or is it a farmer's market? In conversations with one of the farmer's market up there that I had this last couple of weeks, he, he just does it at his home in Eloy. He doesn't do it in Casa Grande, Coolidge, or Eloy at all. He just does it out of the house, or out of his farm. What you've got is, on a farmer's market, we've kind of combined the two of them together, artesian market at the same time as you've got a farmer's market. And if we're going to do that, we need to come up with another name rather than just farmer's market, in my opinion. I mean, it's just not produce that we're selling. And that's the one thing that I would suggest on that. Go to the next slide. This here shows, and Larry brought up a point. Where are you at? When we first started the farmer's market back in 2002...
Yes, sir.
...vendors were not only at the parks, they were up and down Main Street, if everybody remembers right. I forgot about that. Thank you, Larry, for reminding me. At that time, we had more businesses open on Main Street, but I think that that may be something we need to look at also is going ahead and allowing people with the artesian market. And to me, the arts, the artsy craft is up to where that needs to go, because they can set up their table, leave enough room between the table and the end of the sidewalk, allow a wheelchair to go by for a disabled person that uses a wheelchair, to allow them to go by their, and observe their wares or their product, and then, but also provide the safety of the sidewalk. The three, where we have it now is at the third dot, is what we call the farmer's market, which in reality is not a farmer's market. It's more along with swap meets. Every once in a while, Ruby will show up with eggs, and which we appreciate. And I think she's there just about every weekend, isn't she? And she's about your only produce down there, and now her farm product. Is that correct? She's about the only farm product down there at this time?
Um, there is another gentleman who lives in the town who, this next weekend, is going to start coming out with his bread and butter.
Okay, good. Okay. We'll come back to you. I'll get you some more input. Right now, we're down at Haga Square, and that's where we are. And on Main Street on Saturday, you've got, what, three businesses open? Is the hotel open, or the fudge shop open on Saturday?
Yes, Mayor Rankin. The fudge shop, True Value, and I know Mr. Pfeiffer has been open for the last few weeks.
So we've got three businesses on Main Street?
Yeah. Total concept. It's my shop. That's right. And, oh, that's right.
Okay. But on Main Street? Okay. What we do is need, we're trying to get people down Main Street. That's what the farmer's market, the original farmer's market was set out for, is to get people down on Main Street. And that's what we should still be looking at today. How can we get them down there? If we had it all the way from Haga Square down to Padilla Park, that'd be beautiful. I think it's pie cream for right now, but I think it's something that could be worked on. Go to the next slide. I disagree with Jennifer on here. And I've talked to Jennifer about it. I'm not hiding anything. I think Thursdays is a bad day to have it. I think the concept of allowing the employees from out of town to come in, to come shopping during their lunch hour for Thursday, I think that's, uh, won't happen. They don't have any place to store their product that they buy, and they got an hour off, and they're going to go eat. If you drive around town on Friday and Saturday, you see all the yard sale signs. And the majority of the business is on Friday. That's when the people, and then on Saturday also, but Friday and Saturday is your two busiest days going around to yard sales, where the type of people we're talking about go, to buy, to buy things, get a break on things. I like Friday and Saturday's concept. The, you know, we can target the residents, the visitors. That's great. But also, you want to target the out-of-town people with your arts crafts. want to target the out-of-town people with your arts crafts and your farmer's produce. You want to get the people coming in from either Santan Valley area to, to the Cactus Forest area, maybe even from Cooley's coming over. And, and so we need to take a look at that. To get it started, I'm, I'm concerned about doing the licensing and charging people. And how are we, you know, how can they, I think a, a person for a nominal fee, pay a setup fee, a fee. But if we make it too high, that we're going to run people out that aren't going to be able to afford, because they may not sell in that first day or the second day their, any product to cover, to even cover their costs, much less their time. And to have a business license for a, uh, you know, I, I don't know if you're sure how that, that goes in there yet. I'm, I haven't looked at it strong enough to find out, do we need to be charging these people a business license for, for this? Well, we want this to build up to the resident, or the people coming downtown to Florence. Maybe that can be held off for a while, I don't know.
Do we know what the other towns are doing?
Jennifer?
I don't, I, I can't honestly say I do, but I can find that answer and get that information to you. It, it won't take long to, to contact each municipality to find out how they address that. And if I may just clarify on the, the business licenses, under the special events applicant, license application, I would say ninety-nine percent of the vendors would qualify for an exemption and they would pay nothing. If, you know, an arts and crafts vendor makes more than $3,000 a year from their craft sales, then they would be considered a commercial vendor and would have to pay $10.
Yeah, what's, what's their price on that? After $3,000, what is their price?
$10.
$10, okay. Valerie, I saw you turn the mic on, did you have something right now?
I think the purpose of having some kind of documentation is so that you'll know who's downtown and if there are any problems or issues, then we can hold people accountable or, in the event somebody sells some food or something that makes someone sick, we'll know who that person is. You need to have some kind of documentation so that you have a paper trail in order to keep track of who's doing what. Whether they have to pay a fee or not, I don't have a problem with waiving a fee, but I think we need to have a paper trail.
I, I agree with you, there has to be some sort of trail, but have you taken a look at our business license application? Well, it's pretty extensive. I mean, very extensive. I don't know how many pages it is, but for a trail for a business li, I mean, for some of what we're trying to do here, I, I, I'm sorry, but I, I think it's too extensive on our, for, for what we're trying to do, a regular business license. How many page business, how many pages is our business license you have to fill in?
The permanent business license is multiple pages, but for the, a special event, uh, application, it's one page.
Okay, now that I can handle.
And, and the town, town staff has worked very hard to, to streamline that process since 2010.
You're, you're, they have to, once they hit the $3,000 plateau, then they get the business license. Up until that, we're just talking about a $10 permit fee.
Actually, the-
Yeah. I know, but that's, uh, but-
The permit-
We're not asking them to do a business license until they make $3,000. So I don't think that's going to be a problem right out of the gate. As long as they pay the $10 for the vendor's permit, that, that covers them for the season, right? Or is that every week?
For most arts and crafts vendors and, and produce vendors, they have an exemption and they pay nothing.
Okay, but-
So it's free for them. They can get an annual exemption. So as long as their gross, you know, the arts and crafts gross sales are, are less than $3,000 a year, they can do as many shows as they'd like.
Okay, so, I don't know. I think if we do this as you've got it set up with the Thursdays, uh, try that to start with, and, but we can still, on Saturdays, let the people do their thing down at the Areola Square or Jackie Square, whatever square that is, where they've been doing it. That won't, that won't interfere with the Silver King thing.
No, sir.
Right? Could we, maybe we could call it the Florence Farmers and Artisan Market. Just add artisan behind farmers. I'm, I'm still worried about Thursday. I, I don't think you're going to get what you're looking at.
I agree with you. I think Saturday would be much better. Yeah, I've, I've never heard of a farmer's market being on any day but Saturday, it's just, you know.
Well, there's a lot of them. Put those others back up there. There's two.
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 Chandler's on Thursday.
Three.
Tucson has them Fridays through Sun, Sunday.
Yeah, Tucson.
And Sedona's is on Sunday.
But-
They're not on that list.
The whole thing about it is, those areas that you're talking about have a bigger, a lot bigger population than what we have to draw from.
They do.
So, that's why I'm saying Friday and Saturdays, those are the two best days to have anything here in town at this time. One of these days when our population gets up there bigger, then you can, then you incorporate that in it. But we're not there for a long, long time, I'm afraid.
Well, if you go to our local Safeway store, you'll find it's full on Saturday.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you know.
That's when people do their shopping.
Yeah. Well, we're trying, uh, we're trying to maybe pull, pull some of the vendors from some of the other communities. We're trying to pull some of those vendors in here, I would imagine, right?
Yes.
Is one reason we're doing it on a different day than Saturday. Because they're already obligated on some of these bigger, uh, communities. They're going to go there on a Saturday, they're not going to come here.
That's what I believe.
And, but if we could build this up on Thursdays, then if we get it built up enough, maybe, then we could do a Thursday and Saturday, or do a Saturday and Sunday or whatever, if it, if it's feasible. But, I mean, we're just starting out here trying to, for us to compete against Casa Grande and-
I think whichever day that you decide to do it, the hours should be adjusted. I know that you want to capture-
Valerie.
I'm sorry, I know that you want to capture the people that come in just to work. So I think if you wanted to do that on a weekday, that you would need to adjust the hours to start late afternoon into early evening.
After work.
Yeah, to try that, to see if you're going to capture some of those people that you're targeting. And then if that doesn't work, then you make adjustments.
Well, we've got a lot of, during the winter, we have a lot of retirees and snowbirds, or winter visitors, whatever you want to refer, uh, that they, they don't have anything to do during the week. A lot of them, they might come on a Thursday. I mean, I, I don't know.
Can we look at doing it both Thursday and Saturday morning? Possibility? Because that gives an opportunity to identify the market and see what's more available for the, for the vendors to be productive on.
Jennifer, have you been able to contact any vendors for a farmer's market?
I was at Arts in the Park in Anthem on Saturday and, because I wanted to start locally, trying to find vendors. And I felt that I got a, a good reception. There was some enthusiasm there and I think we could easily pull in five of those vendors and I think more. So I feel pretty confident, you know, there's a sense of enthusiasm for a new market. And to, I didn't get a sense, one way or the other, from them that the day necessarily mattered, because these vendors were typically retired. So I don't, you know, we didn't, they don't seem to have the conflict to work during the week, as some may, may do. But, and I also have developed a list, and produce is going to be a challenge. Finding a produce vendor is going to be a huge challenge. And so far, it's been no, in the folks that I've contacted. But we keep moving on and I have other avenues to follow, so I'm not finished with that yet. And again, it takes time. Sometimes you have to start the market and then get the word out, and then they start coming and they become more interested. But it's something that we're going to have to work very hard on.
Well, and I think something else there we have to keep in mind too, is anybody that's dealt with truck or produce.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you've only got a short, short time to sell that. And you have to have means to keep it refrigerated and keep it from the heat from getting from it. Ladies with the grocery shop, you know that. Uh, so we have to be able to work with them. But the other thing about on these, these farmers that bring this stuff in, if they're losing money, they're not going to keep coming.
Right.
And if we don't have a crowd of people to get them there, we, they're not going to be our, our guinea pig on Thursday. They're not going to do it. Not unless you can guarantee them something, and, and it would be wrong to guarantee them, I think. I don't think we could guarantee them. But they're, they're just not going to do it. They, they can't afford to do it. They can't afford to lose money. So they've got to come in when they know that there's going to be some people in town, which we're trying to bring in. But again, then, and then it goes back to another aspect, the advertising that we do and who's going to sponsor it. If the town's going to sponsor it, then we need to advertise it big time in certain areas that we're putting out to, to try to draw the people in. We target our advertising on that. If I'm not mistaken, I think that's the proper way to do it, to get them in. The people with, with non-artistic problem, or product, or farmer's product is also a concern here in town, and especially the people that are, that are setting up in what we know is a farmer's market today. Where do they go? What do we do with them? Well, that's, that's a question we need to answer and we need to get some input from them, uh, and then, which we will here in a little bit. My suggestion on that would, again, like going back at the same time as we're doing the farmer's market or farmer's artesian, I can't say that word as good as you can, uh, market, is to have them a place to be able to sell their wares also. Keeping in consideration that are under our town code, we only allow yard sales at one residence four times a year. Correct, Becky? Four times a year.
These are-
Huh? That's the way it's written. Four times a year. Now, if we take and open that back parking lot up with the advertisement on it, make people aware they can come down there to sell their product, or their home wares, their garden supplies, or whatever they're, they're selling at their yard sale, and have them all in one spot where they have the possibility of more people coming, we might have something going there too. You know, that's the way I, I, I look at that. Again, it comes in enforcement issue, you know, keeping track of the people having yard sales. I've had my four this year, I can't have another one.
The, the thing that we might consider is, is not starting out having a year-round, but having a, you know, limited time like, you know, uh, some, some of the other places have.
Yeah. And, uh, but I also think that the idea that Larry brought up, the way it used to be is to have people spread out on Main Street is a good idea. I think, you know, to try to get more people, if there was more businesses open, have the markets open by where the businesses are. Have the booth set up or whatever we can. And again, it all depends on the traffic and if the people are making any money, if they're going to come back or not. And as far as the $3,000, I don't know of anybody that's going to tell you they make $3,000. If, I mean, how are you going to, how are you going to, how are you going to go over to them and say, "Well, how much did you make this week?" "Well, I made $2." Nobody's going to keep that $3,000 up. I mean, the only way, the only way you do that is if you go through the state and make them get a state resale license and so forth as that. If they have a license, you know, but I don't know how you plan on, how do you plan on gauging the $3,000?
It's on an honor system. And, and this goes back to really the IRS, because, you know, once you reach, I think with IRS, it's 4,000, that threshold, then you should be declaring it, either on your taxes or you should have a TPT or EIN number. But really, and I can't answer for the town clerk, but, you know, I think it is an honor system. And, and my personal experience has been, most people don't come close to that in a year.
They what?
They will not come close to that figure in a year. So, as far as, unless they do a lot of special events.
Well, it all depends on product price too.
Yes, sir.
And what the, what the, the people sees as artistic value and stuff, so it, you know, that's-
And, and those who, you know, do have sales of thousands of dollars or more, they're, they're going to take care of all of that. You know, they're, they're going to be prepared to take care of all of that.
I would love to see every one of the vendors come here, be able to do $3,000 a weekend. I mean, they're, they're going to go to your $3,000. So I, I, I got some problem with that. Let's go on.
I can't hear, I'm sorry.
Who are you suggesting coordinate?
Well, at this time, it seems to be defaulting to the town and specifically myself. So I've been delegated to this task. Um, and these are kind of rhetorical questions, but they're, they're certainly important ones. You know, will it be supported and, and who will, who will support it? And that's, you know, along the lines of the conversation we're having this evening. But these are questions that all need to have answers, I think, you know, if we want to do anything more than what's occurring today. And I think, you know, to me, I see this as, as two separate issues. One, you have a co-compliance issue with vendors setting up every week and not, there's no one tracking that and, and the town doesn't know who's on that property necessarily. But the, the other issue is that the town has invested a tremendous amount of money in the Silver King and in the Padilla Park. And so the idea was kind of trying to keep that space activated, because that end of downtown has been basically abandoned for many, many years since Gentry's was open. You know, that's the last bit of activity that was on that end of the street, even with McFarland State Park there. And again, that's another, you know, investment that the town makes annually, is to keep that state park open. So that was just kind of the idea of, you know, having it there at Padilla Park. I think there are pros and cons to having a market any day of the week. And there's always a small risk involved and it takes a long time to get these off their feet and, and successful. It's going to take at least a year to two years, especially with the seasonal market in the winter. But, you know, as long as it's properly advertised and, and managed, I think that it can be a successful market. Again, it just depends on, you know, what the community wants as far as the day of the week and the times and so forth, what works for them.
Would you plan on having this a seasonal event rather than a year-round event?
Yes, sir. From, ideally, from October through April would be probably the, the best season to have it before, you know, it gets too hot in the, in the springtime and then certainly after it cools off a little bit in October. Hopefully, in October.
In February, it'll be about 100.
So, relative, right, right now, so.
I think one thing that-
Well, go ahead. Oh, go ahead.
One of the things that's, I think is important in, in the issuance of the permit is more based on preferential treatment on the location. I think if whoever gets it first should have the priority of where they want to set up. So if we have it at Haga Square as well as Areola Square or anywhere else, it's, it should be designated with the space and as you come in, you determine based on what's available. If you come in two days after somebody else and they picked where you used to be and they've already got the permit, then they have the site.
Good point.
A good point, Ruth. That's a good point. Bill?
Well, I was, I was just going to say, we're, uh, you know, I've been wanting to see us do a little advertising for the town anyway, so I think we'd kill two birds with one stone, of, you know, doing a little advertising on this, the town itself. I know we're looking at a budget crisis here possibly, but if nothing else on Facebook or, or, you know, on the internet, on our website, however we can do it, maybe we can work with the, I don't know, uh, maybe, I don't know if we'd hit the Dispatch or, or Blade Tribune, I don't know which would be money better spent, but, but all I'm saying is, I think, you know, we could, it's, it's an, it's a twice a month deal. So, you know, I, I don't know, I, I just think, uh, starting out, I think it's worth a try to, to do it on Thursday or, I mean, I don't know, Saturdays, you're going to be competing with other communities and other, you know, on Saturdays, a lot of people have other stuff going during the week. Like I say, it might give some of the winter visitors from some of the other communities, not just here, but, an opportunity to do something during the week that they might not have anything going and- that they might not have anything going, and they might make the trip to Florence and check it out.
Okay. Becky?
Yes, um, Jennifer, assuming that the town will, uh, coordinate the event and run the event, have you made any preliminary budget estimates on how much it will cost, including advertising and staff time?
I don't have a, a budget per se. I, for advertising, you know, a lot can be done free these days with social media and so forth. So, we could spend, you know, just a couple hundred dollars a month on paid advertising through the newspapers, you know, depending on the size of the display ad and so forth. Um, as far as staff time, I'm approximating about twenty hours a week of coordination time just for the farmer's market. And, uh, Mr. Hughes over here may, he has some experience with farmer's markets, so he may have a better idea of, of the time involved in, in that, but I think, you know, certainly a fair estimate would be about twenty hours a week.
That's of your time or-
Yes, ma'am.
Any additional staff?
Right, I'm sorry, my time as well as any other staff time that would be required. You know, and it, really, it's a matter of recruiting volunteers and managing that, that permitting process, so, you know, that may also include the town clerk's staff, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Let, let me go back, I wanna ask you, you, you said you went to Anthem this week, this weekend?
Yes, Mayor Rankin.
And you found, you thought five vendors that would come into town?
Right.
Artisan or farmer's market?
Oh, artisan. This was a arts market, there was no produce, there's no foods, uh, there, I take that back. There was one lady who was a, uh, has a pastry business.
Had what?
A pastry business, so it, she does sell food stuff, she's a certified home baker. So, and there's a couple of, of people like that who are interested in coming to a farmer's market in addition to your regular craft sales and jewelry sales and that sort of thing, but, um-
I, I would like to see some more, uh, s- some more of the, the, the vendors for farmers. I'd like to see more of a list of that. Uh, with their input towards what, for a community starting up something brand new, what kind of suggestions these vendors have that are going around, that are actually gonna be selling the product, that'll make them keep coming back. Such as day of the week, such as advertisements, such as stuff along those lines. I think we need to do some more research on that.
I would suggest a name, it was like Florence People's Market. Opens it up.
That'd be, you know, that, uh, I, I, I don't care what we call it, but I think we should need, get some more input into what, uh, what were, what were the vendors, what do they want to come here?
I have a name of a vendor I'll give you, Jennifer, that you can reach out to, and they have a former, a form in Casa Grande. They actually fill on the internet and they will deliver as well. So I'll give you that information, you can check with them.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is that nickel?
That's Gillespie's, the Gillespie's.
Oh, the Gillespie's? Okay.
Councilwoman Woolridge, they are on my list.
Oh, they're on your list?
Yes.
But can you get us some information from those folks so that we can make more of a, a, a decision on that?
Yes, Mayor Rankin, I will, um, I'm, like I said, I compiled my list last week of, of produce and value-added producers, like, there's a goat farm nearby, and, uh, there's actually a couple of them, um, and as, as well as dairies and, and produce growers. So, it's a matter of working through that list and developing a matrix with that information. So if there's any, you know, other than the days and times of, of the week, if there's any other information you would like to see, I'll be glad to include that in my questions to them.
I, I think it, you know, I think the day of the week is very important, I think the time is also, uh, the advertising, you know, I think that's something we're gonna have to do anyway. Uh, so I think before we can make any kind of decision on what we're, on this work session tonight, we need some more input from the vendors, the ones that actually know, and maybe even from the people that run them, from the other communities, and get their input on to as much as we can, so that we can make a, the right decision that we don't get a, a checkmark against us because we failed. We've got, uh, you know, Rusty and, and Lynne are very involved in things, uh, and, you know, they may be able to come up with some people, I don't know. But I'd sure like to see something with some more information. Uh, if we get away from the farmer's market portion of this and go to the people with, with merchandise other than artisan and, uh, farmer's product, what have you thought about that?
Mayor Rankin, you know, I'm, I'm following the models for the farmer's market that other communities use as far as the, the artisan and, and produce vendors. Um, most adhere to those rules for, for artisans and that, you know, the, their inventory, their, their products must be handmade. So there's really, doesn't seem to be much allowance for anyone who's selling other types of products that are, say, not made by hand, or, you know, or that are manufactured. So, you might see those more, what comes to my, my mind immediately is that those are the types of products you would see at Mesa Swamp Meet and some of the other swamp meets, you know, in the valley, so.
Anybody have any comment on that?
What?
Said you have any, any comment on what Jennifer just said? I agree with you. Okay, let's, uh, I want the people that have been here for four hours, uh, to come up and let me hear what you have to say to see if what you've heard tonight is somewhere within your perspective or not.
We wouldn't mind working with-
You have to, if you would speak in, say your name.
My name's Debbie Kern. We wouldn't mind working with you to get the farm, the market down there back up and that. You said you have no way of knowing who's setting up down there. Well, there's a form, a one-sheet form that when Christie Cox was taking care of it, she had every vendor fill out. And the last four or five years, she's had me have the people fill it out, and then in October, I give her all the forms from the year before, and she turns them in to whoever she was, needs to turn into, that's how she wanted to do it. If you want them every month, every week, I can do that. I've got copies of everybody who's been down there this year so far. It lists their name, address, phone number, what they sell.
I, I didn't realize you had all that information.
We do.
Okay. And who are you giving it to?
Christie Cox.
Have, have you got that information?
Mayor Rankin, I do not have that information. I don't know if Ms. Cox submits it to another staff member, but I'm not aware of that information.
Can you find that out?
Yes, I can.
Good, thank you. What do you think about our, what we've talked about here tonight as far as the farmer's market artisan portion of it?
It's a good idea, and it's also, it sounds like a good idea to have it two nights a week. And that, or during the week, every other, every other week or whatever. And that, but I've got two letters here from vendors who are open on Saturday, or shop owners who are open on Saturdays, saying that us being down there brings people downtown and into their shops.
Eventually, would you have any problem of moving the, away from the artisan farmer market concept to where some of your vendors down there don't have handmade items or farm produce? Moving to that vacant lot, to the parking lot off of Main Street?
No, Dennis is the only one down there right now that is selling things that are not handmade, and he's willing to move.
If, if-
If there's someplace he can move to.
And, and once you agree that we have to have the advertisement and try to get the people in as far-
Yes.
And out, to get other vendors down there with that one, one vendor that we have?
There's a real, well, a cheap way to go for part of the advertising. Um, for years, I've been contacting the local papers around here and asking them to put us in their events column, because it lists every day of the week and what's going on. And they do that.
Okay.
They will do that for you.
Uh, I would like to, if you'd submit the letters that you have.
I don't have them with me now.
Oh, you don't have them with you?
I didn't get them to you, no.
Okay. If you'd bring them in to Lisa and give them to Jennifer, I'd appreciate that.
Okay.
That information. Is there anything else?
Um, just that we're willing to fill out the paperwork to stay there.
Okay.
And that, um, I've got the big packet for the group to set up where we're at, and then the vendors are, it's okay with them with getting the individual-
Okay.
-permits. If you let us do it.
We'll, we'll, we're, we're gonna figure it out. We're not gonna kick you out of business.
Well, that's what it sounded like to begin with.
We may, we may have to change, but we don't wanna run you out of town.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, there is no-
Mayor, council members, my name's Don Underdump. Uh, I definitely agree on one point, that instead of calling it a farmer's market or an artisan market, it should be possibly a name of a community market. Uh, then you've got all the bases covered. Uh, I spent twenty-seven and a half years working for a newspaper in a major but, polite city back in Pennsylvania, and, uh, marketing sometimes will work for you and sometimes it won't. Right now, we've got an established position there, uh, where we're setting up now. Everybody comes by there, a lot of people stop, a lot of people, uh, over the years, I've been setting up there now for seven years, and when I first started setting up there, I'd have people come up and say, "Oh gee, I didn't know there was a farmer's market here." Uh, yeah. So, what Debbie and I had devised to try and advertise the thing was I, uh, we're still working on this, but we're gonna hold off now until we see what's gonna go on here. What we had come up with, I had come up with, uh, I used to do some design work, I had a small business back in Pennsylvania doing design work, flyers, et cetera. And what we come up with, and I've purchased them, are the, uh, cardboard brochure holders. You know, sometimes you'll see them made of plastic, I checked those out and they wanted like three bucks a piece, so we went with the cardboard. And I am working on a design for the flyer, and what we were going to do was take them to businesses in Florence, Queen Creek, Coolidge, and even over to Casa Grande, and then keep a book with the locations of the flyer holders, brochure holders, and that way, say, every two weeks, we could go around, "Oh, well, this one's empty, put some more in there," and keep that going while the market is in effect. The people come into the stores and they, you know, look at the counter, oh, and pick it up and start looking. Uh, we thought that might be a good way, and it's rather inexpensive. A ream of paper costs five dollars, and I've been printing them up myself. Um, and I bought the, uh, the holders myself, but like I say, right now, we're gonna hold off to see what the council decides to do. But I think to take away the setup on Saturday would be detrimental to the downtown area, because it is established, and people keep coming back and coming back and coming back. I've seen people come back three, four years in a row. Uh, local people, a lot of snowbirds. So, you know, I understand your position here, you're trying to figure out what's going to be best, but I'm just putting my two cents in here to, you know, if you wanna try another location and have strictly a farmer's market, that would be okay, that would be a good idea. Advertise it, then that would be Saturday and maybe Thursday, that you get people to come into town that they know, "Hey, we, what are we gonna do today?" "Oh, well, they got farmer's market on Thursday, let's go over to Florence." Um, and maybe you could think along the lines of what the idea I came up with with the brochures, and maybe put those around the businesses. Originally, we had thought about sticking a sign on a window, but, uh, I kinda went against that because of the fact that the businesses have to keep their areas clean, their windows, et cetera, and get a window washer in there, and you don't care, zip, there goes the, the thing, where you have, uh, you have the flyers on the counter there, people check out, they're gonna see them, pick them up.
Okay.
And, uh, I think I do agree with the council that this, this, uh, market should be organized and publicized and all. It'll, it'll, uh, help us, the vendors, it'll help the town of Florence, and it'll help the businesses.
What, uh, what product do you have?
Uh, I, uh, handmade teddy bears.
Okay.
And-
So you'd fit into the artisan portion of it, then?
And I do, uh, uh, some other things, I make some tote bags and, and things like that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Didn't there, uh, is there a newspaper or some kind of publication out in Santan Valley? It's called Sentinel or something, or, okay. Is that part of the Dispatch Papers?
It is.
Well, I would think that we could, on their event calendar, you know, every, like they said, every, every week they have events, things to do on certain days, if we could have that at least put in there. And then I like the, the little brochure idea he's had, which I've been wanting the town to do for ages anyway, and, uh, but I've been wanting to put them in resorts and stuff, but however we can put them, I think that would be a good, good way to go. It'd advertise the town and it would advert, it would help what we're trying to do here. It's, it would kill two birds with one stone.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Dennis Irvin, I'm probably the only one up there that isn't qualified to stay in an artisan market, and I have no problems with that. Uh, the mayor mentioned trying to get either like a swamp meet or a place where everyone can do, uh, uh, yard sales from one location where it can be watched or whatever. I've been there nine and a half years. You know, this is the first time I've been objected to since I've been there. Uh, Debbie's the only one that's been there a year longer than I have. My only thing is, I cooperate. If that's, if I have to move to a swamp meet, fine, but I'd rather do it here in town. I'm normally in a wheelchair. Uh, when you're on social security, you don't make that much money. I'm allowed to make five hundred dollars a month without having to report it. And, you know, like I said, if you find me a place I can move to, I'd rather stay in Florence. I mean, I have to take grandkids or whatever to help me load and unload the car, and I have to buy them lunches or, or breakfast before we set up, so I spend half the time more money than I make during the day, but it's one day a week I get out of my house instead of just sitting around watching TV all day. I, like I said, I like a lot of your ideas, just, you know, try to expand it a little bit for the other people around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you buy that food in Florence, right?
Sure.
Do you buy that food in Florence?
Huh?
Do you buy that food in Florence?
That food, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, usually Burger King, McDonald's, when you, they're ten, fourteen years old, they, and, I mean, occasionally, if they, if I have a good day, I mean, I, right now, I sell knives and swords, but I have Civil War reenactment type stuff, uniforms, hats, uh, uh, I had Bugle, I just sold that to the young lady back here. And, uh, but, uh, uh, you know, I carry some t-shirts. So I'm basically more of a swamp meet, it's just I've been there nine and a half years already. And, you know, uh, I don't ask for any consideration because of that, but, uh, you know, if the mayor suggested finding us a, a place for a, a local swamp meet, you know, I don't mind paying a fee.
With a proper, with a proper advertisement, it'll work.
You know, I mean, if, you know, if I, if I could get like a seasonal permit for twenty-five dollars, you know, and if, even if I could stay at the market, but I mean, you know, I don't mind paying a fee, 'cause that's my social time, I go out and see people. So, uh, you know, like I said, I'm willing to listen and do what I can.
Thank you.
I've been here in town for about eleven years now.
Okay, thank you. Debbie, have you come back?
If I could add one thing on top of what Dennis said, I have had, well, some of the other vendors too have had people come up to them asking if they could come set up. And they've had yard sale and swamp meet items. And we've turned them away. If you did, like you had said, have a swamp, local swamp meet or yard sale area.
Yeah.
It'd pull a lot of people in because at least two, three people a week sometimes are telling, I'm sorry, you can't set up here.
Well, I could, if we separated in that back lot with the proper advertisement where the vendors have people come to it with a signage on Main Street pointing them that way.
Yeah.
I think it'd work. Thank you. Jennifer, you have any questions about us, what we want you to do, or did you get a pretty good idea?
I have a list.
Yes.
I don't mind reviewing.
We got one more.
Yeah, I just um, do I understand you're saying about this Saturday event that you want the whole group to go to a, a parking lot? Or because most of the people who are selling, other than this gentleman who just spoke, uh, would like to stay on Main Street at, at Areola Square. Um, this gentleman who will not be selling there because of the, the items he's selling would, would be willing to move someplace else. But it's my understanding that most of the, if I'm not, am I right? Yes, that the people, most of the people who are selling there now, the egg lady and the, and the jewelry makers and uh, and all, and the other people um, would want to stay on Main Street. Um, and I think the owners of the businesses on Main Street would want them to be on Main Street as well.
And that's something we'll have to take a look at as we get a little further into the process. Thank you.
Mayor Rankin, to answer, truly answer your question, I believe my next task will be to contact the other municipalities that have farmer's markets to find out what their licensing process is, as well as develop a matrix of produce vendors, uh, asking them pertinent questions as to, you know, what they would need or, or desire to see in a farmer's market that would, to bring them to town.
Okay, that's fine. Larry? Thank you.
This has been a fascinating discussion. And what makes it truly fascinating is, is that is, we've paid witness to the fact that we, that the group that's here tonight has been self-governing. The one-page application has been completed. When the yard sale junkers show up, they've been turned away. And the discussion at this table has basically added a, a layer of, of confusion perhaps. Worry about compliance, uh, permitting, so forth, when it's already been in place. Um, but I don't want to sound negative. I really don't. Because having owned the building on Main Street for twenty-two years, two sixty North Main, most recently known as the Gun Shop, that had always been full for twenty-two years, last made the Gun Shop, because they were so successful, moved out. And that put a hole on, another hole on Main Street. And then all of a sudden, we couldn't find another tenant. There wasn't even a, a call. Not even one inquiry. The only inquiry I got was from my insurance company informing me that my insurance was at risk if I didn't have a tenant. So I organized a corporation and have opened up Florence collectibles, coin and stuff. And what I really feel in my heart is, is what, having now sat in that store for four weeks and realized that Main Street could be called a crater, because when you go south from that store, the next retail shop is Pinell Market. That's near the stoplight. There's nothing, zero. You got the Clark House. You got a title company, a re- a realtor, Florence Copper. None of that's retailing until you hit the Pinell Market. But in the four weeks I've been there, I've met a number of people. And most recently on Friday, I think it was, lady stopped in and says, my husband is an artist. And he sells six hundred paintings a year. And we're looking for a gallery. I said, well, your name's on the June Door building. She says, well, what's this one for sale for? And I said, well, prices are a little low right now and we're not distressed. I said, go look at June Door. It's a better uh, uh, gallery. She says, I know, knew June. She's, uh, the people have been in and out of this town for twenty years. And why I think the Renaissance has begun is that really among the council members tonight, we all want to see it happen. And what, what we, me included, have learned is that our concerns are really non-concerns. Here we have a self-governing group that's been in business, what, twelve years? Two thousand two, it's fourteen? That speaks well. The Chamber, yes, did kick it off in oh-two. And then Chris Cox basically ran it. And I think burnout happens uh, with all of us. And for the town to say, we consider the Saturday market an important market and will embrace it and support it and advertise it, and at the same time, look at a Thursday market, either noon market or an evening market, whatever, only adds to the ambiance and again, the renewal of the street. But let's not get it too complicated because free enterprise has already figured it out. And all the public sector has to do is really embrace it and help it and nurture it. And that perhaps is the reason why I'm standing here right now, is to encourage you to continue this embracement and the support of both the Saturday and the potential Thursday market. Thank you.
Charles, you've been wanting to talk. But you've got a sore throat, so you're not going to talk very long, right?
No, I'm not, sir. Uh, mayor, vice mayor, council. Um, I would recommend that allow staff to go back, get the initial information you all have requested, as well as the information that the audience has brought up. We could bring this back to council, a second study session, probably in late January if you're okay with that. And until then, we should let them sit as they are, the vendors, until council makes a final decision and determination on this subject.
I, I think that's a good idea that, but speed is the, the essence for the season we have left. Do I have any, any objections to that? Okay. Okay, at this time, unless there are any other questions about it?
No, I think we.
Word session?
I agree.
I'd made call to the public, second call to the public. Anybody else have anything you want to say? Seeing no movement, I call, call to the public, call to the council, Valerie?
No, I'll save it. It's something.
Becky? John?
Yes, I would like to just uh, compliment the staff on the parade Friday night and all the participants. If you didn't attend the parade, you really missed something. We had a grand time. And I don't know what the count was, but that's the biggest crowd I've seen in Florence. I don't know where they all came from, but, but uh, we all had a good time. Thank you.
Reuben?
Uh, that's kind of hard to top, but I'd like to see it happen for Founder's Day as well as the Country Thunder Weekend. So I know those two are probably our next two major events. So hopefully we get something going then.
Bill?
No, I, I just, I, I, I think we just need to keep this simple, like Larry said, you know, that we don't want to get it too complicated.
Karen?
Just want to thank everybody that came out tonight, sharing your opinions and views. I also want to give a congratulations to Ally Feliz, who's graduating Friday with her bachelor's in Parks and Rec.
Mine will be very short tonight. I want to send out on behalf of the council condolences to the Selaya family. Uh, Tommy, who just came off the council, his father passed away unexpectedly Friday. Tommy Selaya. I want to send our really condolences to them. Uh, we really appreciate the work that Tommy did. And Tom, Big Tom Selaya is lifetime resident, lifetime resident of Florence. And he's going to be missed. Also, Manuel Rujo has passed away. I don't know if any of you knew Manuel, but he was a lifetime citizen of Florence. And then one person that did pass away, this, that wasn't a resident of Florence, but he spent many years here with Jim Martin. Uh, retired highway patrolman, worked for the Pinell County Sheriff's Office for many years. So I worked with Jim back in the seventies when he first came into Florence. So I'm going to be missing him too. Again, the parade was a beautiful parade last night. It, it kind of reminds me when I was a kid growing up in Main Street of Florence on Saturday night. Back then, we had four bars open to draw the crowd. And we had to put on a parade to get that many people down there. But we had, we're, we've got a beginning. And I think it was a good pro, a product. I really appreciate it. Thirty-three entries, I believe, is what we had. Thirty?
Forty.
Forty. It ended up forty. I heard thirty-three earlier. But that was really a great parade. A lot of people from out of town were in here. And that's the one thing we want to see. The, the one drawback to it, the fire department didn't put lights on the fire truck. They brought Santa Claus, but they didn't have lights on the fire truck. And I wish Pete was here tonight. Okay, I have nothing else. Need a motion? Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, second adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, we're adjourned. Thank you for coming.